November meeting, Board of Trustees meeting. We are live streaming and recording this meeting. And we're gonna start by taking attendance. I think we need to call out everybody, right Sarah?
Uh, yes.
So I can do that real quickly. So we got from the board, Roger Jarrett, Bella Gorman, Evan Zabrowski, Darren Rose, Sheila Kelly, Maura Nevin, Jill Schaefer, and I think that's it. We do the quorum. I would like to appoint a timekeeper. Anybody wants to volunteer for that? It's always an exciting role.
Well, I've dodged it up to this point, so.
Alright Darren, you got it.
Let you know when you're over on the agenda?
Yes, and I'm gonna start by confusing you because we have Dwayne here for a limited amount of time. So one of the things in the agenda today, we're gonna be voting in our new parent rep which the PTO chose Dwayne Stanley to play that role. And he's, well, I'll let him say where he is because I think it's very impressive what he's doing tonight. But he stepped out to be here at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm gonna give him a chance to introduce himself. We can then go back to the regular agenda, but I wanna make sure we do that before he has to run. So Dwayne, anything you'd like to say to introduce yourself to the board?
Yes, so thank you everyone for allowing me to be in this position. I am very excited joining you guys and helping AMSA as best I can. The reason why I'll be short tonight is I'm currently the keynote speaker for the Boston Scholars Dinner tonight, so stepping out because they gave me 10 minutes because I'm a little behind, so I can say hi to you guys and just say I'm excited to join and bring my experiences to further help AMSA. So any questions that you guys have ahead of time, anything, just let me know and I'm here and available.
Any quick questions for Dwayne? Again, we'll talk more once we get to the point, but alright, well, welcome as parent rep and hope you have a great event and you can stay as long as you can. And you're welcome to join us back after the event and let's see.
Yeah, I'll see. I gotta try and run and grab some dinner before it's all.
Alright, thanks for making the effort to join though, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no worries at all. I'll talk to you guys soon.
Excellent.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Break a leg.
Real quick question Bella, do we have any requests or public comments? I don't see anybody other than.
No.
Okay, so there's no public comment. So with that, I'm very excited. We're gonna start the meeting today and this is something that we've talked about in the past and we're, we're finally making it happen today in this meeting. To start with a little bit of a board education. And we've talked about in the past, there's some board members that are new, some that are not that new that probably haven't really sat down to think through the kinds of things we can do with Board on Track. So you may have heard me talk about Gina Paffar who's a consultant that works with Board on Track. That's been a great help for us. Gina couldn't make it today, but I actually spoke with Yuna Shin who was on the call today. And they kind of use similar roles in how they support AMSA from Board on Track. And I'll let Yuna introduce herself, but the idea was to use, you know, a few minutes, you know, 15 minutes or so to show everybody what the platform is. I know we have talked about, you know, it is a portal, but it's not just a portal. There's a lot of things that we can do from a resource perspective and from helping us with governance and with, you know, you've heard me talk recently about goals and how we put our goals in. So rather than continue to say, let's use it, let's just play around with it, like I think it's a good idea to have a bit of an overview of the platform. So we'll use that time at the beginning of the meeting today to let Yuna walk us through that platform. So I think it'll be a well timed span and then we can talk more after that on, you know, how we wanna proceed with, you know, using the different things that we have available for us. So with that said, I'll turn it over to you, Yuna, and you'll take it away.
Alright, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright, starting off with introductions, my name is Yuna Shin and I am part of the Member Success Team here at Board on Track. And I help hundreds and hundreds of schools utilize this Board on Track platform. And I'm here to help you navigate and answer any platform questions you may have. I am in California, so I am able to assist you after hours as well. Now, you all have access to this platform. We offer operational tools that increase the functionality of your board. We host meetings in here, committee meetings, we store documents. You can create goals, you can create surveys in here and make sure that you're in compliance with open meeting law. And we're just here to help you create and store these institutional memories. For example, our public portal, I don't think I've showed this to you all, but if you're interested in it, you can definitely enable this feature. This is a school called Urban Montessori. This is up in Oakland that we work with. In their governance field, they have their next upcoming agenda within one click of the website. California is really strict. But this is hosted by Board on Track and the public is able to access your meetings and your agendas in minutes this way in a nicely organized manner. You could also drag and drop recordings in here so the public has access to that too. So I'm gonna click on a random agenda and the public is able to access the agenda here. So you have that feature. The other half is our strategic tools. So you have access to our Governance Coach Gina as Raul had mentioned earlier. She will be your sounding board to bounce off any ideas, maybe ask any governance related questions like, you know, how to create a board retreat or what goes on a board retreat agenda, or what is the next committee we should focus on? What kind of committee goals should we create? So she is here for you. She's here as even a shoulder to cry on. So Board on Track offers something for all board members. Starting off, this is your dashboard. Any upcoming Board on Track events will be here. This is a webinar that we host every month. You could also access any webinars or meetings in this tool. So if you're interested in learning more about some of these topics, you can go ahead and click register. You don't necessarily need to attend, but it's good to know and we'll go ahead and send you a recorded webinar via email as soon as it's done. I'm gonna go through and just give you a brief overview from all these features. And then at the end, I'll answer any questions. Any action items, once you log in, you'll probably as board members be required to fill out a skills and demographics survey. So it's gonna live here, it's gonna have any reminders, any goals that you may have, it'll be under my action items as well. I'm gonna start off with the board page. Here you'd be able to see attendance history as well as a quorum line. Any upcoming and past meetings will be here. Any board specific goals will live here. And then posts is really cool. You can create a post. You can send it out to all the board members listed below. The cool part about this is that they cannot reply all to your post, so it eliminates serial communication, which is really great for open meeting laws. Let me go ahead and show you an email of what the meeting invitation will look like. So it's gonna look something like this. Please RSVP yes in person or yes remotely or no. And then this is going to update this attendance history rate for your previous board meetings. Going to the committees, once you build out your committees, there is an opportunity to create meetings in here, track your committee goals. There's committee specific documents that you can drag and drop in here and then committee specific posts to send out to your committee members. This is to ensure that you get, you know, you remain organized and you ultimately get work done at the committee level. And just to reiterate, Gina is here to help you, guide you throughout the year and we'd really be happy to help in any way we can. So a lot of schools for committee meetings, they would actually pull up these goals sheet. And during a committee meeting when you're, you know, creating goals for the year, you could adding goal. You can add a topic and then a specific date if you want. You can add a goal and then underneath that goal, you can create tasks for your board members, so, or your committee members. Sample goal. Name. And then you can give a specific due date if you wish. I'm gonna go ahead and delete this at the end. Okay, so you can access any of these meetings here. Board is in blue. Committees are in yellow. You can kind of uncheck that if you want it a little cleaner. You can access your agendas and minutes clicking into the meeting. Like so. Moving on to documents. This is kind of like a Dropbox where you're able to drag and drop important board documents. So bylaws, policies, board member orientation package should live here and so forth. And then the committee documents is just a compiled list of all your existing committees and the documents that lives within the committees. And then the public portal, most users will have this locked because it's for the public portal as I've shown you earlier with Urban Montessori. Goals is just a compiled list of all the goals, board goals and committee goals. And I see that we have goals in place. I'm not sure how updated it is, but you can see it overall. Alright, moving on to assessments and evaluations. So assessment is a board assessment. It's a survey targeting all the areas of important board governance. It takes around 20 to 25 minutes to do. We'll have all the board members participate. I'm gonna go ahead and click, I'm curious to see if it's six out of 10 completed. You can go ahead and look at the reports. So this is basically holding up a mirror to your board to see how well they're doing based on what, right? There's no national standard or anything like that. So we've created a ranking from one through five. I can show you a mock one as well. It might be here. So it's gonna look something like this when you download the PDF. And you can see right off the bat that there are huge misalignments between the CEO and the board and these individual toggles. You can go ahead and see that. Gina will be able to help you extract some key points for you and this is especially important maybe before a retreat. So you can talk about how to better align, you know, your CEO and your board and how to further that relationship better. Going on to the CEO evaluation, I'm gonna go ahead and give you a mock CEO evaluation report. It'll pull up a similar cool infographic report here. You can see the average responses between the board, the staff and the big purple icon is the CEO. And this is a survey that's completely customizable. So you can add in questions, you can omit questions. And these, they have different types of questions, so there are free writing responses here and it is completely anonymous. Moving on to reports. The main thing you should look at is the members' report. So once board members complete the skills and demographics survey, and I see that some have, most, most of you have completed it. This is a board composition and it helps you track terms, so these colored circles are actually clickable. And you can see who has experience. I'm gonna go ahead and click these people. Yeah, so you can see who has experience within each skill set. And it helps create a forward thinking roadmap for the next several years and it allows you to plan for recruitment and/or succession. And then these, this is just a visual pie chart of your demographics, you know, hey, does your community, or I'm sorry, does your board reflect the community in which they serve? Service at purpose here. And then a few more things. Resources, this is what I like to call an untapped goldmine because over the years we picked Marcy. She's our CEO's brain on charter school governance. So anything under the sun, good governance, you'd be able to find here. So what I like to do is search up who does what. And let's say we go into the financial oversight roles. This is so amazing because it has webinars, tablets, articles in here and there, this is actually a Word doc that you can download and it is editable. I'm gonna go ahead and open that up. And you can see that we've created kind of like a template or like a rubric that you can edit to see how you see fit. This is the, you know, just the frozen responsibilities of the full board, the finance committee, school leadership team, and then maybe the CFO here. And then you can kind of see some of those responsibilities that you should have throughout the year. And obviously you can edit it. Gina will be able to help you create and formulate some of these responsibilities as well. Director is just a visual tile of all the users invited to Board on Track. And then two more things I wanna show you. Under my profile, you can go ahead and click Edit. You'd be able to see the skills and demographics survey that you can fill out. And it's best to take the skills survey at the start of every school year because you can pick up new skills along the way. Under my profile, you can opt in or update your email notifications. And then integrations is where you can integrate your calendar. So that way, once you RSVP yes to that meeting, that email that I just showed you, once you RSVP yes, it's gonna show up on your Google Calendar or your Apple Calendar. Alright, and then the search bar, if you're looking, if you're looking for, you know, oh, what, when do we approve on this policy? You can go ahead and type in that sample term and it's gonna search all your minutes and agendas and all the documents for you. And then last but not least, there is a, once you click that lifesaver icon, there is a chat button. I'm gonna be online. A governance coach is gonna be online. Leo, our Member Success Team lead is going to be online. We're here to help however we can. And I'm actually, you know, as I said, I'm in California, so I am able to assist you after hours until eight, I believe. Alright, and at the end of our call, I'm gonna email everyone here so that way you have my contact information as well as my calendar link so you can book some one-on-one time with me. I'm also gonna provide you Gina's calendar and her email so you can book some time with Gina for maybe a strategic session. And I thank you for your time. I hope you got some helpful information out of this presentation and now I'll open up the floor to any questions.
Thank you, Yuna. Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
I'm always telling Board on Track and what I've said in the past, I'm gonna repeat now that you know, I first thought of it as a website, as a portal, as something that we use to help us track what we do and, you know, put the meetings and all that, which is definitely true. But I realized that it's way more than that. You know, it is resources, it is a library of things. Like, you know, when governance sometimes think about hey, how are we gonna put together guidelines for public comment and whatnot? We can actually search that library and find examples there. So we've actually used that a lot. And, but the other thing that impressed me and this, Yuna, to show you, that chat link, I thought it was just like any website that has support, that has some kind of chat bot or something attached to it. That's actually the same people that we are, like Richie, Yuna, or Gina, or Magnitio is the other person that we work with. So I think that makes it, it's very real, you know, it's real people behind this and real experts. So I think this is something, especially for new board members, to realize that the more we use this, the more we get out of it. And just like everything else, you'll get, we'll get out of it what we put into it. So if, the more we take those assessments and put our goals in there and use it as a tracker things, the better we're gonna be for not having to think about those things because the platform's gonna take care of that for us.
Yeah, and then for new, for new board members, I'm gonna go ahead and email this to you anyway, but this is a really cool feature or tool that Gina had created. There is a Governance One-on-One Training webinar and then there's also a course that you can take. I'm gonna quickly show this to you. Click here to access the Board Governance Course. And this is just gonna show you, you know, the basic Governance One-on-One. You can go ahead and start the course and here is a course overview. And it's gonna just show you governance versus management, that type of information. I'll go ahead and email this out to you shortly. Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for jumping in.
Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Alright, so that was our board education. And by the way, I think it's a good idea to keep in mind if anybody thinks that we should be doing more things like that, like, you know, board education, which is not really, you know, something that we need to vote on or or, you know, a school related discussion, but more to help us be better at what we do. I think it's good to put some time, not necessarily in every meeting, but you know, if anybody thinks it's a good topic, let me know. We can continue to do things like this. Alright, the next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I think the only thing we have there is the construction budget updates, which I think is pretty straightforward. Does anybody wanna bring that out of consent agenda or are you good to move on? Alright, then we'll move on. Now we go into voting. First will be approving the minutes from October 26. I had a quick comment and I mentioned this to Sarah. When I introduced the vote in that meeting about Lucy Ferrante, I think this was my mistake. So the minutes are correct, but I just wanna clarify it openly. The motion was to accept Lucy as a, as a member of that board, not as the chair. So the chair continues to be Chris. I think the minutes correctly say what I said, which was incorrect. So I just wanted to clarify that because I reread it in the minutes and say, okay, that's not right. So the chair continues to be Chris. The motion as stated in the minutes is correct and Lucy was voted as a member. So Sarah, I don't think that necessitates any change in the minutes, but I didn't want to say that out loud so it's on record. But that's, I misspoke and, but we all knew what we voted for. So with that clarification, I'll take any, or unless anybody has any discussion about the minutes, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from October 26.
I'll motion to approve the minutes from October 26.
So that was Evan.
Second.
Second by Maura.
And I will call. Great. We have Bella.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Jill.
Abstain. I wasn't there.
Great. Maura.
Yes.
Raul.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
And that's everyone who's here.
Motion passes. Thank you. The next one is our very brief minutes for my very brief meeting on November 8. If you recall, that's the one where we couldn't actually make a decision or ratify the contract, which we did the following week. So I'll take a motion to approve those minutes from November 8.
Most.
Darren.
I'll take the second.
Roger, your second.
Darren and Roger.
Roger.
It would be helpful when you say, make the mode, just say your name so I know if I'm not looking. Thank you. And I will make all the names. Bella.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Raul.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Motion passes. And now the more meaningful minutes of November 15. Take a motion to approve those minutes.
Darren moves approval.
I will second that. Evan.
Move the law.
Thank you. Alright, that's every, um, make. Bella.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Darren.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Raul.
Yes.
Raul, Roger.
Yes.
And Sheila. That's everyone.
I'm gonna abstain if I wasn't there.
Alright, the motion passes. The next vote, we just briefly talked about that, is to approve the new parent representative selected by the PTO. So you heard from Dwayne introducing himself. He has, he has experience as a parent and volunteer for the PTO in his children's previous school and has a lot of experience in the professional world. So it seemed like a natural fit. So like he said, he couldn't be here in the phone meeting because he said the Boston Scholars Dinner being the keynote speaker. So we can't wait to hear how that went. So anyway, the vote is just to accept him and approve him as the parent rep, which will then allow us to present him as the board approved parent rep for the commissioner to approve as well. And you know, after that approval is through, then he'll have voting rights.
So I. Roger, I mean, Raul, when I have to submit this, I was going to submit it tomorrow, but the way I have it written in my request letter, I have it that he is going to fill out the remainder of this year and then fill, then do the next year. So it sounds like there was a, an issue about that and I want to clarify that before we decide what to do because that was the intention of the PTO.
Yes, if that's the intention, then I would respect that intention. So unless anybody has an issue with that. Okay, so do we, should we call it out in the motion?
Yes.
I'm gonna say it out loud and you tell me if I do it right. So the, I'll take a motion to approve Dwayne Stanley as the PTO chosen parent representative for the remainder of this school year and for all of the next school year. So it'll be 2023, 24, the remainder of 23, 24, and then all of 24, 25.
So moved Jill. Second Bella.
Who's second?
Bella.
Bella, thank you. Alright, I will call the names. Bella.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Raul.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And Sheila.
Yes.
Okay, that's everyone.
Excellent. So welcome Dwayne. And like I said, you know, official voting rights start when the commissioner validates. That's the right terminology for this to become effective, which hopefully will happen before our next meeting in January. Mr. Naraki, I think our next item on the agenda is to talk about a bullying intervention plan. Is there anything that you wanna tell us about that plan? Any quick summary before we take a vote?
I do not think I have much to say. We reviewed this at Education Committee. I sent it out in advance, a few weeks in advance of the Education Committee meeting in November and offered, I sent a Google Doc along with that, offering members to ask any questions. And there were no questions submitted and that document was thoroughly reviewed by our school attorney.
Excellent.
In addition, the Education Committee recommends approval, voted to recommend approval of the document.
I'm sorry, can you say that again Roger? In addition to?
In addition to what Mike said, the Education Committee reviewed the document and voted to recommend to approve.
Good. Any questions about the plan? Before we approve it? Then I'll take a motion to approve the AMSA bullying and intervention plan.
So moved by Sheila.
Second by Raul. Sorry.
You got it.
Second by Raul.
Yes.
Alright. Bella.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Raul.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And Sheila.
Yes.
That's everyone.
Excellent. So that's all our votes for tonight. Thank you very much for all that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Maura. I guess I should make it a capital campaign slash development so we don't have to bring that up again at the the committee updates.
Well, they're, they're both pretty brief. We did have a wonderful groundbreaking, which I'm assuming Dr. Mobley's probably gonna talk about or give a little bit of a recap on. Maybe sort of, kinda. But it was great. It's actually gotten some traction in the local press, which is always good. People are chatting about it, which is even better. The Capital Campaign Committee, the entire Imagine Committee is gonna be meeting tomorrow morning. So timing wise, I don't have a very detailed update. And that pretty much goes for development as well. So we are regrouping. We did have a major gifts committee meeting last week where we sort of regrouped. um, where we sort of regrouped and identified some, um, new directions and targets in the community, and, um, also, just, I know there's gonna be more coming from Marcy, but, uh, we are coming up on the end of the year, which is a great opportunity to take action on any pledges you may have made, or to renew your pledges or your intention and make a gift, if you haven't done so already, if you wanted to count, uh, towards your charitable contributions in 2023.
Or better yet, set a recurring, uh,
Even.
So you don't have to think about it.
There you go.
Excellent. Any questions for Maura?
Darren, did I forget anything?
Um, I don't think, well, I didn't hear you say, I'm sure you said it in another meeting, but it always bears repeating that, um, just, we should have 100% participation every year by members of the Board of Trustees.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is a good reminder. And if not, Darren's gonna hunt you down.
That was the mutation of that message.
Again, another benefit of a recurring donation.
Yeah. Darren doesn't call you.
Excellent. Yeah, and, and I, I know everybody understands this, but when we talk about 100% participation, the amount does not matter. That's my, I mean, always, every, every little bit counts, but 100% participation regardless of the amount is more important than the amount.
I'm sure if Marcy were here, she would.
Yes, of course, the amount matters, give as much as you can.
No, I mean, not, not the amount, but I mean, she, she will tell you that, you know, if she's sitting in front of a corporate or a foundation donor, I, I, I can tell you from experience, they are going to ask, you know, not about dollar amounts, but the level and percentage participation by the governing board.
Yes.
And if it's not 100%, they're gonna ask, you know, if your own leaders aren't willing to commit, why are you bothering us? So.
It's a very compelling reason, Darren. Great. So, thank you for that, Maura. Capital Campaign update. Dr. Mobley.
Fantastic. Sarah, I shared, um, the PowerPoint with you in the hopes that you could click through it for me.
Oh, Mike?
Or?
It's in the, um, I'm sorry.
Oh, you know what? I didn't share it with Mike, though, I can do that. Uh.
You want me to run it?
Yes.
You don't mind, that would be great.
I don't mind, yeah.
I have, uh, I have a little challenge to, I'm gonna, I have a little challenge to the kids in the upper school and the lower school to find my, uh, elf Ralph, uh, every day from now until, um, the holiday break. And if they find Ralph, they get to come and see me, and they win a prize. It's my little way of getting kids to come and see me. Um, and I'm afraid that if I present it from my screen, I just shared it with you, uh, we may have all sorts of Instagram stuff popping up that I'm probably not really good at controlling, so. Alright. So as he, um, prepares to get that shared on the screen, um, I'll start a little backwards, um, to talk a little bit more about, uh, development. So we just had Giving Tuesday, and we feel that we had, uh, some success with Giving Tuesday. Want to thank all the families and participants, uh, that sent a little donation for Giving Tuesday. And just to reiterate what Darren and Raul said, the amount doesn't matter. Um, my, my gift this year is, instead of doing any staff gifts, um, I plan on doing a brick or two in the name of AMSA staff, so that they can perpetually each year annually be part of the bricks that we're doing. Um, so any little thing really does help, um, with development. So with that, you can go to the next slide. Um, I wanted to celebrate and a little talent, and I also wanted to promote the upcoming, uh, drama production. So the upcoming production is Jason and the Argonauts, December 8th and 9th. Uh, I'll be there on the 8th, and you can get your tickets through myschoolbox.com. But I was there to see a royal tragedy a couple of Friday nights ago, and Maya and Grace, uh, they're the two in the pink and purple in this photo. They are seniors at AMSA, and they not only wrote the production, they costumed it, they directed it, and it really was impressive. It was really wonderful, and so I wanted to give them a little shout-out at the meeting tonight, because it was really great. Um, go, go on to the next slide. Mr. Finkel, please. The other shout-out that I thought I would do tonight, um, are to some of our athletes. And these, uh, three young people are not only amazing athletes, uh, but they're also, uh, amazing scholars, because we really believe in the scholar-athlete here at AMSA. And, um, they were the students that had the highest GPA, um, from all the teams. And so we have Gabe for cross-country, Gabby, uh, volleyball, and Sadie volleyball. So they were recognized at the Athletic Awards Night, which was also a really, really nice night. Um, the only thing that I think it screamed to me was, you know, the need for AMSA to continue to focus on facilities, right? Because we're upstairs at four kicks, the acoustics are not that great, you know, but these kids are there, they're, they were all dressed so professionally and, uh, getting awards. Many of our teams made it into the tournament and even passed the first round. So we had a really good fall season and looking forward to a fantastic, um, winter season. Alright, Mr. Finkel. Yeah. Wanted to also kind of give a little shout-out, um, to our CS department, Pamaja, um, who was assisted, um, by Mark Vidal in creating a new partnership with Cloudwave. Cloudwave is a healthcare data security company, and they will be working directly with Pamaja and the CS department, actually giving projects for our students to work on. Um, we have a lot, uh, well, not a lot, but we have certain, uh, CS classes that are really project-based, and, um, we really think that this partnership will help us work real-life situations, um, live with the kids. So we're really excited about that new partnership. Alright, next slide. Okay. Onto the enrollment attrition report. Um, so this is our enrollment chart, and the only thing I didn't do here is, it starts with grade six. So if you take a look at where it says FY24, that first blue, um, box is grade six. Grade seven is the purple, grade eight is the pink. Total for the, um, lower school this year enrollment is 430. We do have a bump that we're gonna have to try to manage, um, as we go along. And that's the current freshman class. And part of that is because as we add, as we add in some of the lower grades, we end up with some siblings, and that can then bump us up. So, we have a little bit of a bump with that ninth-grade class that, um, will push us over the 966, uh, next year and the year after. Oh, excuse me. But in the upper school this year, we have 538 students, giving us a total of 968. And then you can follow the colors projected out. Alright, Mr. Finkel. Onto withdrawals. And I am presenting this to you in two ways. Um, first, a pie chart, and then, um, more of a, a chart, like a qualitative chart. So this shows where students are exiting. Um, 41% of the students that exited went to public school, um, a different public school. That could be that they've moved, you know, out of our catchment area. Um, there's a lot of reasons for that transition. Um, that's, that's where most of the students, when they left, went. Let's take a look at the next slide that really breaks it down. So, we had, you can see here, um, in grade six, two students withdrew, both went to public school. Grade seven, we had three go off to a different public school. Uh, one moved in-state, and the transportation was too far. Two moved out of state, and one chose to go private. Uh, grade eight, had five withdrawals. Um, two public, three move in-state. Uh, and then grade nine, six, two public, four went to Asapet. Grade 10, five withdrawals, two public, three privates. Grade 11, two, one public, one private. Grade 12, two, one, uh, went to finish at a community college, and one was a dropout. So, so far, total, we lost 29 students. But those seats have, most of those seats have been filled. Um, we can't fill in 11 and 12, so they were filled at the lower end, which is, you have to be careful, because that's what causes that large bump. Alright, next slide. And then this is just the enrollment by town. Um, thanks to Bella, she caught one of my typos earlier. Um, I had Maynard at 62%, they would have been like, what? Um, so, uh, 54% of our students come from Marlboro, 8% from Clinton, 21% from Hudson, 6% from Maynard, and 11% from other non-core towns. Does anyone have any questions on the enrollment or the attrition?
I do, and I feel it's a question that I should know the answer to, but I'm, I'm gonna acknowledge my need to confirm this. So, we're projecting to be over-enrolled in the next couple of years.
Yes.
Does that mean, does that mean that we should do something to correct that? Or does that mean that we're just projecting that we're gonna take it and?
So go back to that chart, Mr. Finkel, that has, um, back, probably two more, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
76 and 26.
Right. So what we're going, this is just right now a projection. We will probably work on that correction a little bit, because it kind of gets, I, I mean, we're 10 students. If we, if we accept 143 sixth graders into AMSA next year, FY26, we're 10 students over. So every time we're over, we do not collect tuition for those students that we are over. So, we don't get any income, any money coming in to educate those extra students. So, we're, we're, Linda Edwards is amazing, and so she will be really looking carefully at that incoming grade six and watching to see if we have any more attrition. Um, and that number of 143 may be adjusted. We may only accept 140, 139. It's, it's definitely a numbers game, because you don't, you don't really want to fall below the 966, but you don't really want to go too far above the 966 either.
Right, but the, the consequence, I guess, the consequence of being over-enrolled is that we have more students that we're getting paid for.
Uh, no, the, the consequence of being over-enrolled is we have students that we are not getting paid for, and also it doesn't make Jesse happy, so.
Right, that, that was the other part of it, is it a compliance issue besides a budgeting issue?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And again, so this whole chart is based on taking 143 students in FY25, and then the projection of not losing, you know, any, from, from this year to next year, not losing any of our current sixth, seventh, or eighth graders, which we may lose. But we don't have to decide how many sixth graders we're taking in. I want to say until, it sounds to me like the end of February. Do you think I'm right about that, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. So this is still very much a work in progress.
Good, Roger.
Yeah, uh, I know it's, the, the way you described it, the bubble management has always been a big challenge for us. My understanding was that we, that in the past, these, well, got, um, as you described, very upset when we were over the 966 limit, and we were required to submit a plan to get us back to 966, so.
Right, but I believe at that time, Roger, you were more than 20 over.
Yeah, we had, I think we are maximum over, because we had a, it was very large bubble. We were somewhere up in the 980s.
Yeah.
Um, so I did, I, just to make sure that, you know, as, as we manage these sizes, that we stay within the bounds that these, uh, gives for us. Because they were, as I recall, quite upset, and had, we had to have a correction plan to get us back under the cap.
Right, and, and, and my understanding of that is, um, you know, Linda was able to bring it back, so, again. Yeah, th- this chart is just based on us making this decision right now to say, yeah, we're going to take 143 sixth graders. But that'll fluctuate between now and February, and, um, when we actually make those decisions, I'm happy to re-present the actual where we're at for folks.
Can I, can I ask you a question about, about timing? I mean, I imagine, you know, the withdrawals, some of those you know pretty far in advance, and others, maybe not so much.
Right.
Um, and so, I mean, well, when my first child, uh, got into AMSA, she was admitted a week into the school year, because there was a waitlist.
Right.
And so it makes me wonder, you know, if, if you don't know how many people you have living, you know, leaving, or, you know, whatever, do you, instead of 143, do you let in some number less than that? So you, and then hold some spots in reserve and let them in? You know what I'm saying, like?
Yes, so that's exactly the plan, Darren. So right now, like I said, Linda created this chart based on 143, but we will, if things don't change from now until February, we will probably let in 130-something and see how that end-of-year rolls out. Who leaves? Who leaves and, um, and then hit the waitlist, so.
I was just trying to figure out how it is that you could ever end up being over, and I guess the answer is, you get surprised way more than you left room for.
Yeah, and sometimes it's the sibling factor, right? So, um, you're supposed to offer to siblings, um, but there does have to be room, it, it get, it's, it's a lot more complicated than being just a lottery. And what we're watching this year, and we won't know until February, is this year Marlboro may hit that net spending cap. Apparently it's happened once before. I want to say someone told me around 2019. Twice.
Twice.
Okay. Um, last night, Linda recalled in her tenure it happening once, but Roger, you've been around longer than anybody else, so.
It happens.
Linda's probably, Linda's probably right. I know, I know we were really close another time, I defer to Linda.
Yeah, I don't know, but, so it is, it's, it's a real tricky game, but she's really good. She watches it incredibly close, I, you know. I, I'm so impressed with the work that she does. It's fantastic. Um, she's got all her ducks in a row, so I think we'll be good.
Got that. Darren's question, the only way we go over the cap is if we, is by the number of students we accept.
Right, that was sort of the point I was.
If we, like, like, if, if you have the map you got here, if we, if everybody stays and we accept 143 sixth graders, then our total will be 972.
And if you don't want to be at 972, then you don't accept.
Then you, then you have to accept less students in one of those grades, and we can accept students from anywhere from sixth through ninth grade.
Yeah.
But where that also gets tricky. Yeah, where that also gets tricky is scheduling, right? Because if you take a hundred and forty-three kids, you have like six sections for sixth grade. If you take a hundred and thirty-five kids, you may still have to have six sections. And it is, so there's there really is a lot more that goes into it than just like surface math. Um.
One of the, one of the problems is too, is that when you lose a student in seventh grade, you have to backfill in that grade. You don't get to pick the grade you want. And that creates part of that problem.
Right, which is why, like, you see this bubble, because I think what happened with that red bubble is we lost, yeah, so we lost kids. You see how it goes from one fifty-one to one forty-four? We're anticipating we're losing kids there. Um the following, but I think it's in the backfilling that made it kind of go over and and siblings. All right, Mr. Finkel, if you want to go to the last slide for updates, I'll give a few other just verbal updates, just updates. Um I sent the board a memo a few weeks ago around school safety. Um we are, all of our exterior doors are now redone with the FOB system. Uh every, at the upper school and the lower school, which are the only schools, uh only uh buildings that we allow parents to check in at. We do have the visitor management system up and running where uh everyone that comes in the building, they need to scan their ID. Um they can get a visitor badge with their photo on it. So we can ask questions more when we see someone on campus, you know, where's your badge, where are you heading? Um it also ties into the camera system. So once someone scans into the building, the cameras track them wherever they go. Uh so it's really a great system. Much of that was funded out of the school safety grant written by Dean Montesian and a team of people. Um so that's fantastic. Leon and I have a team of people looking at and basically an internal communication system where if something happens, any kind of emergency, you can communicate with every staff member very, very quickly. So we recently had the smaller fire. Um and you know, when we debriefed that, we realized in the end, like the the, some of the communication, like telling everybody at once that it was all clear and they could go back to the building. That was very more challenging because some people had radios, some people didn't. So we're continuing to work um to kind of iron out those, you know, gaps. Uh we debrief after every situation we have and it'll continue to be a focus. I anticipate that being part of the strategic plan that I present at the end of the year. Uh quick note on chronic absenteeism. It is a uh focus goal for the administration this year. And it's a good thing because Desi is changing the way that it calculates accountability to put more weight on attendance. So we definitely want to be ahead of the game um on that. And the administration's doing a great job tracking, working with families and working with kids uh to ensure that we have a good attendance rate. Um capital and building project, uh as uh Mr. Finkel said, we're going to have a foundation by the beginning of next week for the building, so it's it's moving along. We have a walkthrough tomorrow. It's an onsite walkthrough with everyone and we'll learn more there. Um Giving Tuesday was a success. We still have bricks for sale. Uh anything that we can um do to help our families know that although AMPSA is a public school, it's funded very differently. And AMPSA doesn't have a well to go back to. Every traditional public school can go back to the towns and ask for additions to their budget. But as a charter school, AMPSA can't do that. So we're looking at creative ways to work with the PTO and create different little scholarship funds to support our kids better in, you know, activities and athletics. Um there's a lot of work being done around that area. So that's all I've got for tonight. Any other questions? All right, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Hey, Finkel, maybe you can hide the elf in the board meeting, see how many people find him.
All right, next thing I did is the faculty rep update. And Greg Theos couldn't make the meeting today. He did submit, submit, and I'm sure all of you saw um a written report, which is part of a documentation. I would summarize that report uh has two main topics from feedback that Greg received in the last month or so um from the teachers, one of them being about salary parity, which is something that the board is very aware of. And we know it's an important issue and and something that we always try to work towards improving, you know, and making sure that our teachers are paid the way they deserve to be paid. And we acknowledge the fact that as a charter school, it is not as, you know, the the level of pay and and the things that our teachers deserve. And we have work to do there. So that is one of the topics. And the other one was about uh the the scheduling, which is always a an excellent and an exciting topic to talk about. But I also know that we always have a way of doing that together as a team. There's some folks within the school that that work to make that happen every year and and um so it's it's good to know that it's in everybody's mind and we'll keep it in mind. Hopefully, when we finish building, it will be an easier problem to solve, but for now, we'll continue to work on that. So. Those were the two things that I saw and it's a big items within Greg's report. But you know, if you want to read the detail, if you haven't done so yet, it's part of the the meeting documentation. I don't know, Lisa, if you want to make any comments about either of those topics and and other timely.
Just, just the quick comments, you know, we're, we're, we will be going into negotiations with the teachers and then the uh department chairs again um pretty soon. And Leon and I are really working on um uh basically some financial transparency to just, you know, make sure that everyone knows our story, right? That that there is that one bucket and here's the bucket. And what can we do to enhance the quality of life for teachers? Uh we know what inflation is, we we understand, and we're going to do our best to make sure that um we take care of the teachers, but we keep uh AMPSA in a viable spot as well. Um with regards to the scheduling, it was, I think, quite bumpy last year with the new SIS system. Um however, Mr. Naraki and Ms. Sensi, they're taking the lead this year and they're really going to manage the schedule from that kind of balcony view. They're going to be working closely with the department chairs. Um the department chairs will still make recommendations around sections. And then it will be up to Mr. Naraki, Ms. Sensi, and a smaller team, um like more guidance type of team to actually build it. Um there was a little bit of confusion around, you know, can Power School build AMPSA's schedule? Well, you can build AMPSA's schedule in Power School, but that's the difference. So Power School or any other SIS system probably wouldn't auto-build AMPSA's schedule because it's a, it's a complex schedule. But um I've hand-built schedules for fifteen years and you can hand-build AMPSA's schedule and get an optimal schedule. And I have all the faith in the world in uh Mike and Amanda to get that done. So. They're starting already. We're meeting with the Power School person uh next week.
Excellent. Thanks for the update. Anybody have any comments about the faculty rep update? Looking forward to having Greg back in our next board meeting. And then moving on to chair business. So we have the committee goals update there as an item, but actually going to make that broader. So um if you remember last meeting, we talked about when's a good timing to to review those goals. And I gotta say, you know, we have, one of the reasons why we had that review of Board on Track earlier today was to show what we could do on using that system to track that. So governance and finance have already put their goals in there. And I see Education Committee also has goals in there, but I think they're from previous years. Um but not going to insist on doing that now or reviewing that now. But we can, as we said in the last meeting, discuss them in uh when we do strategic planning, which will happen in January. So I guess what I will mention as far as chair business is that our next board meeting will be January fourth, and the plan is to do that remotely. Do I hear any opinions otherwise? Because it's January, it's who knows if we'll be snowed in. I'm hoping that we don't get as much snow as we got rain during the summer. Otherwise, we will definitely be snowed in. Uh so that will be a remote meeting and then we'll have our strategic planning meeting, which is scheduled for the end of the month, from the twenty-seventh. So that will be in person. And you know, between now and then, we'll, we'll talk about specifics about, you know, what will happen in that meeting, how we're going to do it. But again, we talked a little bit about this last meeting, so I don't think we need to rehash that, but that's, that's basically the update as far as goals. So definitely encourage you to keep thinking about that within the committees and and discuss this so we're ready to actually make some progress um by the time we meet again. Any comments about that? Do any questions about the upcoming meetings? And actually, speaking of upcoming things, the one thing, uh Lisa, I think uh you didn't mention is the holiday party that is happening in a couple of weeks. So I wouldn't, I I will, I'm going to be actually landing right around the time that the meeting is ending. So I will not be able to attend, but if anybody from the board is available.
We'd love to have you. And if you can make it, just make sure you fill out Sarah's Google form so that we have an accurate headcount. Um and then the only other thing um that I unfortunately, we had to cancel the legislative breakfast. I think December is a tough time for folks and we didn't have the RSVPs. Um but Mr. Vital and I are taken uh going for breakfast with Mayor Vigen on Monday morning to say goodbye and and wish him well. Um but if you can come to the holiday party, we'd love to have you there.
If I may just add, if anyone's having trouble, sometimes outside of AMPSA, there's some trouble with those Google forms. You can just send me an email and let me know if you're coming or not. And that'll be, that'll be fine if you can't, if the, if the Google form isn't working for you. So just wanted to add that.
And just to be clear, if you missed it, the, that is on the fifteenth, Friday, the fifteenth at noon. Did I get that right?
Yes.
All right. And where is it?
The Neighborhood Tavern in Northborough.
There you go. So I think it's important to, I've, I've enjoyed it a lot when I show up to this holiday parties, get an opportunity to meet with the staff and you know, celebrate together. So it is good for for us to be there as a board. Excellent. Uh moving to committee reports, Bella, you want to talk to us about finance?
Um so I just noticed this on the agenda today, so I didn't really, I guess I was surprised I didn't see that. Um or was unprepared. I guess I, what I can tell you is what we spent our last finance committee meeting talking about. And we are taking these goals very seriously and have been having a very, I I would say, healthy discussion about what they should be. Um and you know, with the goal of presenting these into the January, in the January meeting. Um so that really is our focus is we, you know, we're, we're not taking this job lightly and we really want to um put down some short-term and long-term goals that um, you know, that we think makes sense and that we want to um achieve.
Yeah, and I appreciate that finance has been busy with the building project and with with the audit and all that. So timing, I know it's, it's uh difficult, so. Thank you. That's a good, good to hear that's a discussion. Anything else, Roger? What else? No. Then we'll move on into education.
Yeah, um Education Committee, we spent last meeting talking mostly about the bullying uh document. And we did have a short, we we started our, continued, continued our discussion about goals. We do plan to have goals ready. Uh probably, well, we're not meeting in December, so it'll probably be for the uh January offsite is the target that we would have uh additional goals from the Education Committee for.
Um it's good. So I'm about to hear goals is the general theme of the committee so far. Anything else on education? Any questions? So Sheila normally would turn it over to Samani, but she wasn't able to make it today. Do you have any comments about governance?
I don't. I have no recollection of it right now. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, but I, I I guess pretty, pretty quickly, a kind of similar conversation. We actually added some tasks to our goals and um it was, I I think I have some homework from that. Um but similar thing, um we're researching sources for um governance training. So one of the things we talked about is onboarding for uh for new board members and whatnot. So I'm in part of trying to make sure we have more content and more resources for those things. Um I remember that was part of the conversation on governance. And um.
The other thing is we sent the employee handbook to the HR company. And um hopefully, they will have it back to us by the next meeting.
That's right. That was the other thing on the agenda. So yeah, so hopefully we'll have a vote in January for the employee handbook. Wanted to make sure it got reviewed uh by the HR company for legal reasons, et cetera. So that was pretty much it for governance. I don't know, Jill, if we missed anything else.
I think that was it.
Hope Samani gets better for the next one. And then Mo, I think you're good with the, unless you want to add anything to your development committee report?
Nope, we're good.
Excellent. Um so with that, let me just make sure I'm not missing anything on the agenda. Is that it? Did we do a good job, Tank Keeper?
You're finishing like, you know, way ahead of schedule, a very well-run meeting, I'd say.
Excellent. All right, anything else from anybody else? I I don't think I heard any action items today, so no homework for the holidays. Like I said, our next board meeting will be January fourth and we'll do it remotely unless I hear other opinions. And with that, I can take a motion to adjourn?
Motion. And Laura?
Mo, I've moved and Bella seconds.
It was the group. Yeah, okay. All right, okay, uh record these. Bella?
Yes.
Uh Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Jill? Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Raoul?
Yes.
Roger? Roger?
Yes, very soon.
Okay, and Sheila?
Yeah.
Yes. I'll say.
The motion passes. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everybody happy holidays. Uh we'll see you in the new year. Stay warm. And let's keep working uh to make AMPSA a better place for everybody.